Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Okay, Commissioner, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, you ready? All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us on April 22nd, 2025, for our Tuesday Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Before we get going, I'd like to invite our dear friend and colleague Pastor Jason Vandevere for our invocation. Welcome.
Thanks. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you this afternoon and we just thank you. We thank you that all blessings flow from you. You are the giver of every good and perfect gift. And Lord, we thank you for this great nation in which we live with the blessings that we enjoy, Lord, that we often tend to take for granted or overlook. Lord, let us not. And let us not forget that it all comes from you, your willing and open hand unto us. And so, Lord, we just come this afternoon thanking you, thanking you for the gift of your Son and salvation. Thank you, thanking you for his death and for his resurrection, that we might be redeemed and reconciled to you. And Lord, that we might come before you this afternoon in humility and in wisdom, receiving your grace. And Lord, I just pray that you would guide this time, this meeting, that you would guide our leaders and all those who are presenting. And Lord, that you would just have your hand upon this, that your will would be accomplished and that your people would be blessed. We love you, Lord, and we thank you, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you so much. As we call this to order, I'd like to ask our attorney for certification of the agenda. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda. The board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on the agenda?
No, sir. No.
And I have none either. So with that, we're going to move to a really fun and exciting item and one about which I think many of you are here to help us celebrate, but it's a resolution proclaiming April 2025 as Volunteer Month. We have Dan Avery, our Special Projects Manager, presenting for staff. Dan?
As the board knows, there are volunteer opportunities happening throughout the month and throughout this week. There's Arbor Day themed volunteer opportunities here in Cass Rock this week. And on Friday, Douglas County partners with students from the school district for our Spring Dug-Nad tree planting event out at Bayou Gulch Open Space. We have, as you can see, a room full of volunteers from our advisory boards, including the Noxious Weed Advisory Board, the Parks Advisory Board, the Planning and Water Commissions, our senior and our cultural councils, as well as the Sheriff's Office Community Service Volunteers, Douglas County Search and Rescue Volunteers, Open Space and Natural Resources Volunteer Groups, Fair and Rodeo Groups, Adopt a Road Crews, and other Public Works Volunteers, and Veteran Service Office Representatives, as well as folks from our historic preservation and repository. We have directors from the departments that oversee all of these boards available to speak and provide a few brief remarks, but I'd like to begin by reading the resolution in the record unless the board is interested in taking that on.
Board, anybody interested in reading the resolution, or shall we have Dan do it? Okay, Dan, please.
All right. This is a resolution proclaiming April 2025 as Volunteer Appreciation Month, whereas volunteering is a cornerstone of strong communities, fostering civic engagement, strengthening social bonds, and improving the quality of life for all residents. And whereas on April 20th, 1974, President Richard Nixon established National Volunteer Week to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of volunteers across the United States, before it was expanded to a month-long celebration in 1990 by President George H.W. Bush. And whereas more than 28% of Americans formally volunteer through organizations, collectively giving almost 5 billion hours of service annually, equating to an economic impact of $167 billion. And whereas volunteers in Douglas County dedicate their time and effort to numerous causes, including spending countless hours maintaining, monitoring, protecting, and improving our beautiful parks, trails, and open spaces, donating time and expertise on one of many advisory boards and commissions, or otherwise freely giving of time and skills to serve aging resources, the Adopt a Road program, collaborative foster care, and fair and rodeo. They collaborate through the Douglas County Youth Initiative and support countless nonprofit organizations and programs throughout the Douglas County Community Foundation. And whereas through their time and talents and dedication, volunteers play a critical role in making Douglas County a great place to live, fostering unity, resilience, and spirit of generosity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Volunteer Appreciation Month, recognizing and celebrating the invaluable contributions of volunteers across the county. And be it further resolved that all residents and businesses, schools, and organizations are encouraged to support, promote, and participate in volunteer activities throughout the month of April and beyond, fostering a culture of service and collective impact and strengthening our county and its future.
Dan, thank you so much for that. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we would invite the directors of these really trusted and amazing organizations to share with us if you are so inclined.
Our leadoff is Sheriff Weekly. Sheriff, are you available?
Welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office appreciates the incredible dedication of all of our volunteers. We truly could not do what we do and provide the level of service to our community without our volunteers. Since 2006, our community safety volunteers have contributed over 318,000 hours, providing more than $10.5 million in value to the Sheriff's Office and the citizens that we serve. Last year alone, 47 CSVs volunteered over 16,500 hours. Our victim advocates volunteers responded to 159 after-hours, holidays, and weekend call-outs, logging 517 hours, and completing over 525 hours of training. The youth law enforcement explorers, which is how I started out in high school, these aspiring young law enforcement officers assist with traffic control and special events and consistently win awards at a state level and also at the national level because of the level of training that they have been provided. Our chaplain program takes care of those inside the Sheriff's Office who may need a little bit of extra help. Our search and rescue program, a nonprofit volunteer team handling 153 service requests, with nearly 4,000 mission hours, 100,000 miles driven by these volunteers, and 5,700 training hours. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office has 265 volunteers for the Sheriff's Office that contribute to our community. These volunteers play a pivotal role in community safety and saving the Sheriff's Office thousands of hours each year, making a meaningful difference in the Douglas County community. And I thank you for the opportunity to recognize them.
Sheriff, you and your team are tremendous leaders in Douglas County and statewide for public safety, and we greatly thank you for your service and the service of those who have volunteered for the safety of our community. Additional directors that would like to make any comment?
Dan Dirz is our Director of Open Space and Natural Resources, and he has a few remarks on the benefits of volunteer groups to that department.
Great. The answer, welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Commissioners. Very important day for our volunteers. Like the Sheriff, our volunteers are an essential part of our program. We are a lean team, small team of employees, but what we can do with our volunteer resources is tremendous. We have over 400 volunteers that are registered for the Open Space Program. That equated to over 7,100 hours of volunteer time for Open Space. We have 21 different programs, ranging anywhere from mountain patrol, trail ambassadors, weed warriors. We've got all sorts of fun names for our group, but these folks are out there ensuring that our public lands are taken care of. I cannot put a number on what they do for us. The advisory committee that we have is the COSAC, which is the County Open Space Advisory Committee. They have put in tremendous amount of hours as well, but we are so grateful to have the volunteers that we have. They are doing tremendous things for this county, and I can't say enough about that group that we have.
How about a big round of applause for our COSAC group? You know, one comment about Open Space that I know, I mean, not only are they sort of the veteran volunteers in our community, and I see our dear friend Brian leading the charge there on the side, nobody puts in more volunteer hours than Brian, although some of you may challenge him for that. But over half the county is Open Space, if you include the Pike National Forest, about half. And despite the fact that we have a county with almost more Open Space than any other, certainly in the metro area, we are a lean machine with about a tenth the size in terms of our department than any other county. So it really is a lean, effective organization, and you all have done such a tremendous job. Thank you for that. Dan?
Before we bring up our next director, I'd like to introduce one volunteer in particular. Mr. Robert Byrne is with us. Mr. Byrne is Roxborough's Volunteer of the Year. He has devoted countless hours towards making Roxborough a better place to live for his neighbors, and this includes devoting time and attention to fire risk mitigation and emergency preparation, an invaluable service to the people of his community. Mr. Byrne, if you're here, can you please stand up so we can show you gratitude? And we also have representatives from our Public Works Department. Dan Roberts is here to speak about the volunteer efforts within that department.
So it's my honor to be able to talk about the volunteers that help out Public Works on a daily basis. First and foremost, we have an adopt a road county of all, on all the county public roads. And last year, we had 50 different events, 303 participants picked up 460 bags of trash that otherwise would still be blown around the county somewhere. So they play an essential role, not too glamorous, but very important to the quality of life in Douglas County. And I think, you know, I can brag that our roads are cleaner than anybody else's around. You drive down the interstate and you see what CDOT has to deal with. You get off on a county road, and you just don't see the litter out there. So thanks to our citizens and thanks to our volunteers that take care of them. We also have a group that's our advisory board for Noxious Weeds Committee, another unglamorous job but super critical. I see Morgan Polk here today, so thanks for coming, Morgan. They provide guidance to us on that property owner perspective that's so critical. I think what's so important to us is their love for the environment and their recognition of how fragile our air environment here in Douglas County is. And I really focused on educating the public on how quick it is to destroy a property and how long it takes to restore that, and they bring that perspective that's so important. So really appreciate all the volunteers that work to make Douglas County a better place to live. Thanks.
Thanks so much.
We also have Zach Burns, Fairgrounds Manager, here to speak about the benefits of volunteers and the fair board who make the fair and rodeo possible.
Thank you. When you think about the fair and rodeo, you might picture the crowds, the rodeo, the concerts, the carnival lights, but what makes all that possible is a team of volunteers who pour their heart and soul into every detail of the event. First of all, we have our green shirt volunteers. These are the folks who are boots on the ground. They're the front, managing ticketing, answering questions, keeping things moving, and jumping in wherever they're needed. They're the smiling faces our guests see first, and the steady hands that make sure things run smoothly. Their flexibility and enthusiasm are truly unmatched. Next, we have our superintendents and the folks that support them. These are the leaders behind the scenes of every competition across fair, from livestock to open class exhibits. These individuals take full ownership of their areas. They're not just running contests, they're creating meaningful experiences for exhibitors of all ages. Thanks to their knowledge, their passion, their dedication on the competitive side of fair, it's truly something special. And finally, we have the fair board, more than 40 strong. This group of year-round volunteers is the straw that stirs the drink. They're constantly looking forward, building on our past successes while making strategic improvements that elevate the patron experience year after year. The time, talent, and heart they invest in this event is nothing short of remarkable. So on behalf of the Fairgrounds team, I just want to say thank you. Your commitment, energy, and your love for this community make the Douglas County Fair and Rodeo what it is. We're so grateful and proud to stand beside you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Zach.
In rounding out the remarks, we have Nick Geogh from our Parks Department.
Welcome, Nick.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Parks Division is incredibly grateful for all the volunteers who have served with us. In 2024, 337 volunteers provided 713 hours of service during 30 separate events that we held. These volunteers planted 107 trees, 950 tree seedlings, eradicated thousands of mullen weeds, pruned back vegetation on four miles of trail, and collected 49 bags of trash. Many of these volunteers are high school students, working towards their graduation requirements, and we are thrilled to provide the opportunity for these students to partner with Douglas County School District. We are also grateful to the numerous businesses and local groups that have served with us, such as Cherry Hills Community Church, the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, American Family Insurance, Pure Infusion, and Amentum. We would also like to thank the members of the Parks Advisory Board who volunteer their time to attend one to two meetings each month, and in 2024 vetted the Parks budget requests, and then also 13 park funding requests. In 2025, the season has kicked off. As Dan mentioned, we do have Arbor Day coming up, our Dug-Nad event on Friday. We already have 80 people that are signed up to do that, so. And then I just, we had a few people that are here. I wanted to mention that with Cherry Hills Community Church, we have Gary Klett, Nathan Miller, and Terry Steiner, if you guys would stand up. They're one of our biggest. They're one of our biggest volunteer events that we do every year for their love extended. So they've been showing up for four years now. We've been working with them. And then we have Alisa and Bella Ballewicz. They've been out many times to help us on our events, too. Parks is a little bit different. We are transactional, so we don't have a big group of people that come. We have, we have all kinds of opportunities where people come one time and then they may not show up again. So we have plenty of volunteers, but it's a lot of them that just come for one time. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Nick.
As you can see, Commissioners, these volunteer efforts have significant benefits to the county and the citizens of the county as well.
They absolutely do. I'll open it up for any additional citizen comment with regard to this item. Okay, anybody online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Thanks, Troy. So with that, I'll bring you back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I mean, it is so terrific to be honored here today by the presence of the volunteers that keep our community running. We truly could not operate a county government, our parks, our open space, our law enforcement, our roads, our bridges, without the hard work of the volunteers of Douglas County. They truly are the heart and soul of our community, whether it's folks that we heard from today helping older adults maintain their independence, keeping our parks pristine for families and kids, responding to emergencies, or contributing in any other way. We know that volunteers are just tremendously important to our community. We are grateful for what they do, and we can't say thank you enough. And so today, just, we want to take this moment out of the busy day for all and say thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. Well, first and foremost, thanks for everybody who came today, who participates in these programs. You know, we travel around the state to visit with other counties, and, you know, we hear the briefings from other counties on, you know, how many people they have employed in their Open Space Department, how many people they do have sworn under a badge in their Sheriff's Department. And time and time again, and Commissioner Layden, we've always commented on, you know, we don't even have half those number of people, and yet we seem to be doing twice as much because of all of you guys. And, and the work that you do, you're saving your neighbors millions, millions of dollars every year by devoting your time, donating your efforts to all these things that we heard about today. And I, I hated it in the Army, especially when I was a private, when, you know, some officer from West Point would get up there and say, you know, hey, each and every one of you are important, and then do something at some other time to, you know, make us not feel very important. So I hate saying it, but I'm going to say it because in this instance, it really, it really matters. It's, it's the efforts that each and every one of you bring to serving your neighbors here in Douglas County. Guys, it really makes a big difference and makes our jobs easier by far. I hope it makes our managers' jobs easier. If it doesn't, you know, they're managers, they're big kids, they'll get over it. But thank you all very much. Thank you for coming today, but more specifically, even if, I know there's a bunch of you that aren't here today, thank you for coming out and, and doing what you do do, because it does make a big difference here in Douglas County.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Teal. And I would just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. This is just, it's a tremendously heartwarming day, and each of you here really represents the spirit of Douglas County. Back in the 90s, for those of us who were around back then, we used to have a saying that Douglas County is a place where quality of life comes first. We're reinstituting that motto throughout the county, and so much of that is a reflection of the hard work and commitment that each of you has made within your specific sectors to make Douglas County amazing. And I want to speak to a specific program. I, you know, when I first got started, there was about 160 Open Space volunteers, just crushing it everywhere. And we thought, well, is there an opportunity to maybe do this in the Parks space? And I really want to thank COSAC and all the Open Space volunteers for being the big brother and coming alongside the Parks folks and helping with that increased volunteerism. But what Nick said is right. We realize there's this beautiful marriage between the school district, all these kids need volunteer hours, and then Parks that can always benefit from some cleanup. So I remember very clearly being a member of Cherry Hills and our family actively participating in Love in Action, which is now Love Extended. So my tremendous thanks to the faith-based community and particularly the leadership from Cherry Hills, because what we're doing now certainly is an expansion of what you all started many years ago. And that was a partnership with HRCA where you'd go to church on a Sunday and then get delegated out into the community after donuts and some coffee to clean up. Well, I discovered a few years ago that there's a Scandinavian tradition called dug-nad, and it's D-U-G-N-A-D for our Scandinavians in the audience who might be familiar with this, but it's a very similar cultural phenomenon, where community volunteers, families, friends, just come together as neighbors. Early in the morning, they get donuts, they get coffee, they spend time with one another, and then they just fan out into the community. And they work in parks, and they work to help with seniors, and they work with Public Works, and they just do that. And that's part of the culture of who they are. Then they get back together and have some laughs over lunch or maybe an early dinner and spend time together. So that's really the, the idea, coupled with Love Extended, of this notion of dug-nad, and it's a little wink at Douglas County, so it's D-O-U-G-N-A-D. But that's this Friday, and we're so thankful for, frankly, all of the, the young people that are going to come out and help serve, but that's an invitation to all of you, both in the faith-based community, the nonprofit world, all of your specific departments, to encourage your friends and neighbors to participate and continue that culture of giving back. And I will tell you, going out to a park out in Parker, watching kids plant trees and then naming the trees that they planted, they now get to come back and see the trees that they named and have a personal investment of what it means to be a Douglas County citizen. So all of that is that culture of giving back, and just because you want this to be a beautiful, amazing place in Colorado and in the nation. So I'm tremendously thankful to each of you, and I think we're probably ready for a motion.
Why, yes, Mr. Chair, and I would move to approve a resolution proclaiming April 2025 as Volunteer Appreciation Month.
I will second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Let's give yourselves a big round of applause. So with that, I see our Director of Communications and our photographer. We may pause for a moment for a brief photo, and we'll let them direct that.
Here with us today, we invite you up to the front for a photo. This may take a minute to get everybody in the right spot, but some of you can also, if you're closer to the back of the room, you can follow my colleague Macy up behind the dais.
And we will take a brief five-minute recess for folks, for all the volunteers, to make their way as they are headed out. their way as they are headed out. Okay, well, welcome back, everybody. What a wonderful ceremony recognizing our volunteers. We're going to move on to item three, which is our consent agenda. At this time, I will ask for any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Any citizen comment? Okay, seeing none, going to turn online. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, please, the board, I do have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through W on the consent agenda. Items X through Z were pulled from the agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to item four, our regular agenda items. And we have three items for our regular agenda. The very first is with regard to a business personal property tax incentive agreement between Douglas County and Safran Defense and Space, project file ED 2025-001. And we have DJ Beckwith presenting for staff. DJ.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The request before you is for approval of a business personal property tax for Safran Defense and Space Incorporated. I am DJ Beckwith, representing Planning Resources. We have with us today Christoph Bauer, representing Safran. Safran is leasing a 28,337 square foot facility to house manufacturing, integration, testing, and the associated personnel supporting their wide range of space products. The facility is located off Comm Park Boulevard in Parker, Colorado. The facility is anticipated to create 20 new jobs within the next 24 months, consisting of primarily of engineers, technicians, and operators. The facility highlighted here on this map is located at 15020 Comm Park Boulevard in Parker, Colorado. The area is incorporated within the town of Parker. The company has requested a rebate of the county's portion of business personal property tax for the location of a new operation in Douglas County. The proposed agreement covers a 35-year period and includes 100% of the business personal property tax rebate for the tax years of 2026 through 2061. Based on estimated company investments, the total rebate amount over the 35-year term is estimated to be $1,7,988,138. Staff has evaluated the incentive agreement with both the county attorney's office and the county assessor to assure compliance with state statute. The board may approve the agreement with Safran Defense and Space Incorporated as it complies with the county approval standards and policies. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Christoph Bauer, Vice President of Business Development and Sales for Safran, and Ellie Reynolds, CEO of the Douglas County EDC, are also here to speak in support of the agreement.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Any questions for staff before we invite our guests up?
No questions.
No, sir.
Okay, welcome Christoph and Ellie. And Christoph, you're welcome to join us right here at the front podium. We know exactly who you are, but for the record, if you want to just state your name and where you are from, that would be great.
I'm Christoph Bauer. I was born in France, came to do grad school in the U.S. about 30 years ago, and was very lucky to win the green card at the Immigration Lottery. Eventually became a citizen 20 years ago, and have been in aerospace for most part of my career. I was one of the first vice presidents at SpaceX selling rockets about 15 years ago when nobody knew about that company. And moved to Douglas County about 11 years ago to join Lockheed Martin and have been a resident of Douglas County since then. So I, I have to say, I love Douglas County. You all do a wonderful job. Raised three daughters here, a very safe environment. And for the volunteers that are still here, I'd like to tell you that every time I walk my dog at the bottom of Bluff Regional Park and I see a piece of trash, I pick it up.
Yeah. Good job.
But, but let me tell you about Safran and why we're here. Do you want to go to the next slide? So Safran is, is one of the top 10 aerospace and defense company in the world. It's a $20 billion company. In the U.S., it's been active in about 23 states, except the state of Colorado, until we moved in here. Expertise is aircraft, equipment, seatbelts, interior propulsion, and defense and space. So Safran employs about 100 people in the U.S. But last year, what the company did was to create a new company called Safran Defense and Space, Inc., which is three divisions of Safran doing defense and one of them doing space. And if you go to the next slide. And, and the particularity about Safran DSI, as we like to call it, is that we operate under a special security agreement with the U.S. government, which, which means we are FOKI mitigated, meaning foreign ownership, control, and influence free. Some of us have clearances and we're able to perform DOD work up to the secret level. Those are the four divisions that I showed on the, on the slide. What's really critical for us in Douglas County and the great state of Colorado is that Safran has decided to choose Parker as the center of expertise of anything space in the U.S. And the goal is to grow that, the business of DSI to the about $200 million dollar. The, the goal is to grow it to $2 billion over the next 10 years. And, and the, the growth of the company will benefit the county tremendously. And this is why we're very thankful to Douglas County for the tax incentive to, which is not the main reason to come here, but, but, but plays a big part. And next slide. So we do, we do a lot of business already, as I mentioned. Space Force down in Colorado Springs is one of our customers and, and other people. Next slide. This shows you just a snapshot, when picture tells us of all the different product we sell. We build a ground station, we build the modems that go to the ground station. Those modems activity will also be here in Parker, Colorado, where we build those firmware in France, ship it here in Parker, and have U.S. citizen putting software for the government done here in this location. So it'll be part of the activity. The other main activity that I show here is on the satellite, you see something called the Hull Effect Truster. It's an electric propulsion engine that allows the satellite to move very efficiently in space. And it's a great technology. It's non-toxic. Traditionally, satellites have used extremely hazardous chemicals requiring hard mats, electric propulsion to go in the future. And it's, and it's a great technology. Where Safran has about 30 years' experience in bringing that top-notch technology here in Colorado to serve the U.S. market. Next slide. And why did you choose Parker? Well, one of the reasons is because I live here. And I'll be honest with you, it's a, it's a great place to live, but don't tell my boss. But it's very business-friendly environment. The talent pool is excellent. When you, when you hire high-tech people, the, the talent pool in Colorado and Douglas County is absolutely top-notch, probably one of the best in the nation to get, to get engineers and excellent people. Colorado State was very generous with us. They offered us about 400K worth of incentive to establish a business here. And working with Ellie and, and you all at Douglas County, we're very excited about, about what comes next as far as a tax incentive. Quality of life, this is a great place to live, we all know that. What's important for Safran, the group, is, is very pro-renewable energy. And the fact that we have Co-Electric Company as a provider of electricity was key to us because they have a big program in providing renewable energy in the future. Very warm welcome from the state and local official, and also very positive feedback from all our customers. When we talk to all the other aerospace companies in the area, like Lockheed Martin, like BAE System, York, Terran Orbital, and Northrop and many others, I said, oh, you're coming to Colorado, that's great. So that's my presentation. The last slide is just a picture of the electric propulsion we've built here. I'll be happy to answer any question on that if you, if you'd like to. But again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Wonderful, well, tremendous thanks. I would actually like to offer up a huge round of applause to Safran. I'll ask my board if they have any questions or comments, but I will just tell you personally, it was such a deep honor to be with your executive team at your grand opening. And the welcome that you had for our entire delegation with a United States flag that was as big as your entire wall behind us was incredibly kind and very well received. So thank you for being such a wonderful friend and colleague to all of us in Douglas County. I know we are looking forward to so much more to come. So thank you. Board, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment with regard to this item? And Ms. Reynolds, did you have any comments?
Just a short comment. Really, Commissioners, thank you for making it possible for us to locate an international aerospace company into Douglas County. When we started working on behalf of the Douglas County EDC on locating Safran over a year ago, you know, while there was a long list of the reasons that they located, top of those was quality of life, which is often the policies that you put forward. So I would echo my thank you to you all for the policies that you continue to drive forward that helps us locate companies like Safran. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And Ellie, before you go, we know that some of these really tremendous site selection opportunities do not occur without your leadership. You are like a rocket just taking off into outer space. So we are so thankful for our partnership with you. Appreciate it. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment online. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thanks, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment, bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I could, take a moment and just thank the great folks and the visionary leaders at Safran, and also our own Douglas County Economic Development team. Because, you know, the teamwork, the effort, the, the vision to bring Safran here to Douglas County, it's something that we are all very proud of. And kind of to bring us back to the point of today, which is discussing the business personal property tax and the waiving thereof for the company. Whether it's Safran or almost any other company, this is a, a tax that I've often viewed as almost immoral. The company, they will pay our full taxes when they purchase something, their full sales taxes. But the business personal property tax is one that follows, it gets taxed on that piece of equipment or whatever. It could be a tree spade, it could be, the, the equipment that Safran is using gets taxed year after year after year, which puts into question very fundamentally, who is the owner of that piece of equipment? Was it, if it's a tree company or the tree company bought that tree spade, they paid a tremendous amount of money for it, they paid the taxes on the sale of that. So why are they being taxed over and over again on their personal property that they are the owners of? Goes back, Old England, you heard stories of, of sweet old ladies would hide the pots and bury the pots from their kitchen in their backyard so that the government couldn't see them and tax them on it again and again and again. And I, I think with this, it's a one small gesture that we as a county can say, welcome to Douglas County, we appreciate you, we're open for business, we're friendly to business, and we want those great jobs and companies to come here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, well, I really appreciate our new colleague introducing that line of logic in terms of the fact that this is a aggressive tax on businesses that we really want to have here in the county. You know, you, you talk about a business and they advertise how many jobs. Well, that's, that's a livelihood for a Douglas County family, very likely. And that's, that's in large part, you know, why I'm here is to work for the hard-working families of Douglas County. I've always been, my voting record is very clear. I have generally, if not always, supported these sort of tax credits used for, to bring, as an incentive to bring businesses in. If for no other logic and no other reason, you know, these are businesses that are paying their property tax. These are residents that are here, they are in the community, they are buying things in the community, so they are paying sales tax. And I know some people might look at that large number and say, that's money that could be coming into our county coffers. And I would just remind everyone that after paying all of our bills and balancing our budget, we still had $36 million left over two years ago. And we had money left over last year that we applied as a property tax credit this year. And those jobs don't come here. Well, hang on, yeah, let's not be extreme. Let's take, Christoph, let's take you at your word. That was not the only reason why you decided to locate here at Douglas County. So let's say this incentive has nothing to do with the jobs coming here. When the jobs come here, well, when you talk about that tax, nobody's paying it now. So we don't lose anything by giving that credit away. In the meantime, yeah, it sounds like we're going to get some jobs out of it and good-paying jobs and well-educated folks who will fit in very well here into Douglas County. So I'm very much in favor of us making this motion today and passing it.
Great, is there a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve a business personal property tax incentive agreement between Douglas County and Safran Defense and Space, Inc., project file ED 2025-001.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Again, I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Again, I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues that, you know, homes are where jobs go to sleep at night and these amazing jobs are going to find their way right here into Douglas County and benefit our entire community with a really highly educated workforce and exciting new opportunities that'll really launch us into the next frontier. So we're excited for more to come. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Congratulations. With that, we will move on to the next item in our regular agenda, which is a resolution opposing House Bill 2025-1312. Jeff Garcia presenting for staff, and I believe Commissioner Van Winkle is intending to speak to this motion.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, to start things out, I'll just read the entire resolution aloud. And then if I could, Mr. Chair, perhaps speak to it from a more personal manner.
Please.
Afterwards. This resolution opposing House Bill 251312. Whereas for the safety and welfare of the residents of Douglas County, Colorado, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners adamantly opposes Colorado House Bill 251312 as rehensibly harmful to children and detrimental to the families and communities of Douglas County. Whereas pursuant to CRS 3011101 subsection 2, the Board has a duty and authority to provide for the public health, safety, and welfare in the county. And whereas on March 28th, 2025, the Colorado General Assembly introduced House Bill 1312, which requires the court to consider parents' beliefs regarding gender identity when making custody determinations, dictates parents' rights to make personal decisions, including the name a parent is required to call their child, a gender, the gender a parent must recognize their child as, and prohibiting the disclosure of the child's medical information at the risk of being denied custody or access to their own child. Prohibits Colorado courts from giving effect to out-of-state court orders regarding child custody when those orders are based on a parent's decision related to the gender-altering medical procedures. Requires school policies regarding students' names permits, permit students to choose names that are different from their legal name. Requires school dress codes permit a student to select any option available in the dress code regardless of gender. And includes parents using the name of a person that was given at birth and a person's gender at birth as discriminatory acts under the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Douglas County Board of County Commission recognizes a parent's right to identify their child, instruct and educate their child, and make medical decisions for their child without the fear of state, the state taking their child. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners is dedicated to protecting parental rights. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners recognizes children and minors' lack of maturity to make life-altering decisions regarding their, their gender and identity. And the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners recognizes imposing gender identity requirements creates toxic exceptionalism and fissures into the community. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners denounce House Bill 1312 as burdening unrelated employment housing and public accommodation officials with identifying and understanding unclear gender identities by imposing civil liabilities for the temporary state of transitioning, transitioning gender identity. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners denounce House Bill 1312 as unlawful and unconstitutional as violating the US Constitution, Article 4, the full faith and credit clause. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners opposes House Bill 1312 and demands and requests that Colorado lawmakers do not pass this destructive law. That is the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Van Winkle. Any further comments from the board?
No comments at this time.
Okay. So with that, and I believe that, have you read the resolution?
Yeah, I was hoping to make more personal remarks if I could.
Please.
I would just say, I'm proud that my colleagues have taken me up on the ask to pass this resolution today and give us a forum to discuss this. I think it's just become increasingly clear that Denver and the legislature has in large part forgotten the people of Douglas County or willfully ignores the people of Douglas County. And not speaking for all, because there were several that voted against this measure when it was in the House and is before the Senate now. So there is still time, but we know that legislative rulers have ignored us in the past and will likely continue to ignore us. But for us, here remaining silent is no longer an option because we must voice opposition when insane bills come knock at the doors and threaten Douglas County families. And when the government intrudes into the home and family where the government has no right or authority to speak into or rule within the home and the family, I think it's our duty as commissioners to at least voice our opposition, especially when there's a bill that, we went into many of the details in the resolution itself, but basically it comes down to, we'll take your kids from you and mutilate them, and if you don't let us, we'll throw you in jail. That is far beyond the scope of the legislature. We have here in our chambers, null, sine, numine, nothing without providence, which is our state's motto. And I see no providence whatsoever. In fact, quite the opposite in House Bill 1312, and very much hope that the legislature will find a way to stop this bill.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional commissioner comment?
None at this time.
Okay. So with that, I will open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this bill? Yes, sir. If you want to state your name and where you're from, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Bob Marshall. I'm from Highlands Ranch. I wasn't expecting to speak on this resolution, but the other, but because I saw this, I thought I'd make just a couple of quick comments. When you say House Bill 251312, it might be nice to say what the actual title of the bill is. And the title of the bill is legal protections for transgender individuals. And that is what most of the people in the state house are concerned about. I was the only Democrat to vote against this bill in the House. And because of that, I got some national notoriety and had a right-wing television show wanting me to be on prime time at 7:00 for 15 minutes as their live guest until we had a discussion and they found out I didn't vote against it because of any anti-trans bias, but because of full faith and credit issues and some other issues I saw in the bill. And I was willing to stand up and say, this is not ready for prime time. One Colorado, the number one LGBTQ organization and advocacy group in Colorado was in full support of this bill. They've gone into an amend position now for the exact full faith and credit issues I was pointing out and the issues I have. But again, the baseline for this bill is legal protections for transgender individuals, and it's an effort to protect people from the animus and bias that can happen. So I understand where the desire is to come with this resolution, but I would hope you would ask for an amend position and maybe look at trying to get to a point where you can be concerned about the individuals that may be a little different than others, rather than just condemn the whole. So I'd ask you to consider that when I'm looking at the resolution. Again, it seems to be a condemnation of the whole, and we have other people on our side that, you know, want the whole thing. I think we all want to see people protected, and that's what the, the title is. But yes, there are serious issues with that bill right now, and I've told people, if they correct it and amend it and it comes back from the Senate, I probably will vote for it. But thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any additional citizen comment? If you just want to state your name and where you're from, we would appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Echo Browning, and I am a constituent and a resident in Highlands Ranch. And I would like to say that I believe, and I hope you believe, that all people deserve to be treated with respect. And that includes our colleagues and friends and neighbors and children and people who live in our community who are transgender. So I do not agree with your resolution, and I support Representative Marshall's request to make this an amend request rather than to oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure I clearly understand all that's included in the resolution for this, but I was watching the news last night of about two women in California on this very issue. And they are, the, the, the school districts are, are requiring, almost taking over the rights of the parents. So the children are making decisions in the classroom, and if the teachers decide or if they don't have to alert the parents about their names or what they call them, transgender, if they prefer something, this and that, if I like a specific type of, you know, I think that's kind of like what we spoke about last year in front of here, and the federal government's problem, is that we have little handouts of morality, immorality, and I don't say transgender is immoral. What I say is when we're, you know, making all these far-right, left, and including and, and giving priority, which I feel and why I'm leaving the state of Colorado, because, you know, I went to Overland High School, I was a four, four athlete. I don't need a history of who I am. I played national soccer in China. I have no family, and I've been attacked with my money, sat before two banks, US Bank and BMO, about how I spent my money helping 1.4 million. And I volunteered four years on the streets. I volunteered here. I studied water plants and spoke about Sedalia. And whether anyone thinks I did anything, what I did was support people who had ideas and confirm and affirm. And that is voluntarily what I did. And I served, I bought beds for Bangladesh families as they came in. We fed thousands, we coordinated with trucks and moved mountains. I fed 6,000 jackets, 2020, winter clothes. I served on the streets four years full-time, sat with crying people and cooked suicide calls, and I was exhausted, yes. I, I think it's not about me, it's that once we like give a little bit, like, I think the woman, and forgive me for bringing little things that I remember, it's just something that includes in my memory and it has nothing to do with personal people. But when we extend for our own personal things, it becomes socialism. And a social, when we look at what Trump is doing and eliminating the, you know, surnames for transgender, or I don't even know the whole thing, I'm not quite up to date, but putting a man in a woman that we, the Constitution and a God-given country, Judeo-Christian, which was based on biblical, the Adamic language and the Hebrew of Jerusalem, and the founding of Christianity, which meant Mother Virgin Mary and Christ born of a immortal God, paired with the conception with the mortal woman. And if you believe in Christianity, that's the base of our Bible. And we keep extending these little, little more and more, and look what we have in our country. Yellow earrings that stand for.
And ma'am, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
And I'm done. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. I am leaving the state and moving, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to have confidence again in who I was and who I am after all the attacks. And Douglas County has been great.
Thank you, ma'am.
You guys have supported me in every way.
Appreciate your comment. Any additional citizen comment? Yes? And if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Is this a timer I have? Three minutes?
Yes.
This is my first time at a meeting. My name's Alicia Vats. I'm a licensed attorney in California and Hawaii. I've been in Douglas County for nine years, and I have a stepson who's gay, and he had the most amazing wedding last May, on May 4th. He's a avid, he's a fan of Star Wars. Anyway, and I just found out that my other stepson, who is going, who is in Boulder right now, he's 21, and he decided that he wanted to be known as Sonny. And, and he has certain pronouns. And all I want to do is respect this, and it is important to respect the child and what they want. So this bill is incomplete. I'm, this is the first time I've read it, but it's incomplete because you care about children? Well, if a child has permission by their parents to go by the name, let's just say Sonny instead of Colin, then the school should adhere to that, and it should be public record. And it is a nice thing, and it is important to the heart of our children to honor every single one of them, not just Republican children, not just Democrat, not just independent, not just conservative. So when you guys see this up here, government of the people, by the people, for the people, Abraham Lincoln, okay? You are not doing that. You, by opposing this, you are drawing the line by your own morality, by your God, and that is not appropriate. So I would really appreciate if you would reconsider and think about amending the bill as it stands, not outright opposing it. Also, for Mr. Van Winkle, I would like to know some evidence about mutilation in this county. Please tell me how kids are mutilated in this county.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate those.
Are you going to answer my question?
This is not, well, dear counselor, so this is an opportunity for citizen comment. And if you can use your time until, give about 40 more seconds.
Okay, do we notice?
Thank you. Additional citizen comment? Yes? Welcome in, if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
My name's Chuck Ready. I'm from Larkspur. I would just like to say that as a parent and a grandparent, it is our obligation to raise our kids. It is our obligation to make those decisions. It is not the decision of a government official to allow someone to hide from myself or from my kids. If there is something going on in the school and my kids want to know about it, or they want, they have questions, they need to bring it back to the parents, not have a school district, a teacher, or a government official make that. I am firmly in favor of this resolution to stop this House bill. I think it's wrong. It's morally wrong, and it's up to the parents. If these questions are being asked, like this lady just brought up, and they were 21-years-old, they're an adult, they can make their own decisions, but not young kids, not the way it's being presented at this point. Thank you for standing up for this resolution.
Thank you for your comments. Additional, thank you. Additional citizen comment? Any other citizen comment with regard to this, this item? Okay, Troy, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could, just to the lady who came from California, this bill actually was introduced in California. It was vetoed by California Governor Gao Newsom. And he cited a lot of the reasons that we put forth today, so I'm happy to talk about it more in a different forum. But I do want to say thank you to the representative who came today. I often was a legislator who was the one vote against my own party at times, and it takes courage, so I appreciate that.
Now, I would echo that. Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. Commissioner Till?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So folks, I just want to make something really clear for everyone. When the representative comes here and he says, hey, can you take an amend position? Guys, he doesn't mean take and change this resolution. What he means is, the three of us, we get on a phone call upstairs in our conference room, and we call our lobbyist, and we have a conversation with our lobbyist. And we say, hey, tell you what, we'd like to go to an amend. And would that be okay? And, and he wants us to have a conversation with our lobbyist because, you know, he doesn't actually like it when we take positions like this. He wants these kind of conversations to happen in a back room somewhere where you don't get a chance to see. And all of you who, who got behind the representative here and said, yeah, you should amend it? Yeah, he doesn't even want you to see it. Now, when we do come and have an open meeting right now, do you know what the representative does? He sues us. He doesn't sue us. He sues you. Because we're not the ones who have to pay the bill. We represent you. But the reality is, he's not suing the three of us. He's not saying, Abe, George, Kevin, you guys suck, want to sue you. He's suing you because you elected us. And he's sitting there and he's shaking his head right now, and he's saying, no, no, that's not true. He likes the open meeting where he gets to go and do the, do the tap dance down in Denver. Matter of fact, Representative, it's really great to see you the south, far south on I-25. But he doesn't want to have this conversation here. Therefore, if it please the board, I do have a motion to approve a resolution opposing House Bill 2025-1312.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I have a few comments. So I think first and foremost, I want to thank everyone, the representative, councillor, the citizens that showed up to speak on this issue on both sides, and certainly my fellow colleagues. As a Republican county commissioner and a proud member of the LGBTQ community, I recognize the importance of safeguarding the rights and the dignity of all individuals. House Bill 251312, the Kelly Loving Act, reflecting upon a transgender individual during the Club Q shooting, which I think is very important for us to recognize, seeks to address legitimate concerns about discrimination and the well-being of transgender individuals, particularly in areas like family law and education. However, it is essential to balance these protections with the preservation of parental rights, religious freedoms, and free speech, in my view. While the bill aims to prevent harm, we must ensure that it does not inadvertently penalize parents who, out of genuine concern and love, and I'm the father of three kids, seek to navigate their child's gender identity with caution. Moreover, institutions with deeply held religious beliefs should not be compelled to act against their convictions. I do advocate for a collaborative approach that upholds the rights of transgender individuals while also respecting the foundational liberties that many hold dear. It's through open dialogue and mutual understanding that we can craft policies that are both compassionate and just, and I think there's more to come. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is item 4B, a resolution opposing, I'm sorry about that. We've done the business personal property tax, 1312, and then item 4C, a resolution opposing state mandates and impairing local control. Once again, Jeff Garcia presenting for staff.
And I believe Commissioner Teal is going to read the bill, or I'm sorry, read the resolution?
If please the board, Chair, I do have a resolution opposing state mandates impairing local control.
Please.
Whereas pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 30-11-107, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners is charged with the management of county business and concerns. Whereas during the 2025 legislative session, the Colorado General Assembly has repeatedly injected state policies into longstanding matters of local concern, including local elections and land regulations. Examples of this state intrusion to local affairs include House Bill 25, 2025-1191, which alters the local process for filling county commissioner vacancies by eliminating the vacancy committee process. House Bill 2025-1319, which alters the local process for filling a county commissioner's preterm vacancy and requires an additional election. House Bill 2025-1093, which prohibits local governments from limiting the issuance of building permits, and Senate Bill 2025-302, which imposes regional building codes for factory-built structures. Now therefore, be it resolved. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners acknowledges the constitutional and statutory role and authority of county governments. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners recognize the importance of local matters being governed by local governments knowledgeable in the unique attributes and needs of the communities they serve. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners opposes the bills identified in this resolution and all efforts by the state legislature to impose state policies on local matters and diminish local control. Read into this record this 22nd of April 2025 in Castle Rock, Colorado, by the Board of Douglas County Commissioners, the County of Douglas, Colorado.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any questions for the attorney or for our staff?
I have none.
Okay. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment with regard to this item? Yes?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I just wanted to bring to light the email I sent you all yesterday with regards to this resolution, because I got no feedback if anyone saw it. So again, what I sent to you all is, hello, this is the Douglas County Board of County Commission Resolutions, be considered tomorrow, was recently brought to my attention, and I'm quite bewildered by it. It mentions four bills in the state legislature of concern to the board that are potentially interfering with local control in the county, but it's difficult to take this serious based upon the cited examples. First, 1191, the county commission vacancy process. This bill has already been killed in committee, and its prime and only sponsor is a former Republican county commissioner who is always very concerned about local control. I've heard no opposition or concern from the board on this bill. And the DougCo board has also only informed the Secretary of State that's in a monitor, i.e. a neutral position on the bill. And then I give the site, county commissioner vacancy reform. This bill is up on second reading, and I have never heard of any opposition or concern from the board regarding this bill. And the board has not registered any opposition or even any position on the bill with the Secretary of State. Even more remarkably, the prime and only Senate sponsor for this bill, and the bill's prime sponsor are both Republican leaders in the State House, and both of these GOP prime sponsors are former county commissioners. Has the board lodged any concerns with them? Question. Limiting building permits. Again, I've heard no opposition or position from the DougCo board on this bill, which has bipartisan sponsorship, and no positions registered on the Secretary of State site. Regional building codes. Again, have heard no opposition or concern from the board on this bill, and no position has been registered. We just voted on this bill on second, on third reading. I voted for it, but had serious reservations and was on the fence. Had the board informed me of their concerns, or had I known of any, I could have followed up and found out what they were. And there's a good chance I would not have voted for it. This is an ongoing pattern that I've been concerned about, that came up on second reading for redistribution of lottery winnings. My GOP colleague from Douglas County, Brandy Bradley, and I both got up to semi-humorously ask the bill sponsor, why is Douglas County opposed? Because our other DougCo representative, Max Brooks, was quizzically asking the same question, because none of us knew why. The only entity that had registered in opposition was Douglas County, yet not a single Douglas County representative knew why. And I give this site to the, you can go look at our conversations on the floor. This is a part of an ongoing pattern in the DougCo government since December of '24. I really hope the board will endeavor to do better for the good of all Douglas County, as this resolution seems to be a comical attempt to provide evidence to justify home rule, rather than being something serious, of serious concern, given that no concerns regarding any of these bills was ever voiced to the Douglas County State delegation, to the best of my knowledge, and so on. And then just finally in closing, no, I meant amend the resolution. I wasn't asking you all to take an amend position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizen comment? Yes?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ako Browning. I'm a constituent and a resident in Highlands Ranch. And my concern with this resolution is that you guys are all about local control and states' rights, until you don't agree the state legislation that got passed by our state legislature. Now you're all about local control and county rights. What I see as this is, you are trying to secede from Colorado. And like it or not, you live in a red county in a blue state. And I would encourage anyone who wants additional insight into the dynamics of what is happening right here on the dais, is to follow a citizen podcaster, Emily Suyat, and her podcast, Red County, Blue State. So I oppose your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional citizen comment? And I will indicate we're about a half hour late for our public hearing.
First of all, I want to refute what she said to the county commissioners, that you're trying to succeed from, succeed from the state of Colorado. The House rule allows, and if you haven't gone to Denver, you might see something you haven't seen. If you've just been on your green grass in your blue waters of Douglas County, that is not the case for many people. And if you think it's the same Colorado, the same Denver that it was in the 80s, 90s, even the 210s, it is not. We bore 42,000 immigrants. There's lots of craziness going on. So I support what they're doing, protecting our land and doing aerial, hiring aerial helicopters for water protection. And I think their priorities are not to succeed from Colorado, but to protect the rights and the beauty of what we've endured and enjoyed in Colorado. So I appreciate this conversation very much, because I know when I look at this bill, my personal is, why wouldn't we restrict some of these, limiting the buildings? And I hope I am right on this. I just quickly caught up on this bill. I hadn't looked at it before. But when I look at what we're facing and just, you know, protecting the beauty of our county, and, and House rule isn't, sorry, mitigating fires, the priority of protecting your homes, your properties, your families, and our economic development. And transportation and the roads that they had prioritized and eliminated, and I didn't get this conversation before, eliminated the small things like Aztec digging and showing it into our big, you know, going, making roads to this good little castle, little village to show our kids how the Aztecs used clay and spoons. I don't, I think they're prioritizing the people and protecting our land, and it's very expensive. And I appreciate not only this, you know, protecting this bill of, I don't know how you say it. I'm sorry, don't quite know. You're trying to, with this bill, and it is, to allow too much into Douglas County is too much. And I just want to mention one thing. I don't know if I'm off course with this. I'll do it at the end, when we have open comment. But there is, you know, if you get out and stand for what's true, and just protect your own property, your own house, fight for your own aerial, don't come over to my property and only yours, and only yours, then we live in a nation where we're divided, and then we fail. But I don't feel that here, and I don't. I feel that the three elected officials and the good judges and the county manager, county attorney, are in the best interests of the people. They don't get millions for this. They work their, they work day and night to protect this county with more and more faced fires, and 30 fires. And I thank God for men who stand in the front, because I don't want to do it anymore. I stood. It's hard.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Any other citizen comment with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none in the room, I'm going to go online. Troy, any citizen comment?
Thank you, sir. No online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, we'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Just to recap, public comment, colleagues, we did get a, a member of our community who, in one breath, advocated for transgender rights over parental rights, tell us, like it or not, you live in a red county in a blue state. We then heard, where'd he go? Oh, hey, just to let everybody know, because I know some folks are watching us on, online, others are going to catch up later on the video. But, you know, Representative Marshall did not decide to listen to how this item that he spoke against is actually being decided. It's actually quite amusing to four young ladies in the third row, that of course, he's far too busy to be this far south on I-25 for too long. But he did describe the Byzantine politics of each one of the House and Senate bills that were given as examples of state violations of local control, filling us in on all those inner details that I don't think we care about, and offering that our opinion encapsulated in this resolution is mere comical evidence of our desire for home rule, and the home rule process that he is suing the people of Douglas County on. Just to recap, public comment there, colleagues, but I did not hear anything in public comment to dissuade me from voting in favor of this resolution as was introduced.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do find it a bit unsettling that the representative who was here that just previously spoke about his boldness and standing up to his own party and being the only member to vote no, then would bash us for voicing our opposition for a bill that comes from a member of our Republican Party. As for not giving him notice that the bill that he really was honed in on, that he emailed this, he emailed this about it yesterday, about our opposition that we made notice to him about, was heard just this morning on second reading. So he knew of our opposition prior to that. So it was, I think it's just disingenuous to come here and say that we're not informing him of our opinions, because our opinions are what brought him here today, so that he can make his voice heard, which is perfectly reasonable, and that's the way it should work. We should, I'm more than happy to have the debate on these bills. As for, like the, he said, we can't figure out why you're opposed to the lottery bill. Well, that one's incredibly easy. The lottery proceeds right now go to our open spaces, our trails, our hiking paths, fire mitigation. What that bill does, and what it proposes to do, is move it away from that and move it to the outdoor equity grant program. What is that? It gives grants to a single nonprofit in downtown Denver, whose goal is, quote, "to close the clear lack of equity that exists for youth who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or queer or questioning for the Native American or indigenous youth, closing that clear lack of equity." I'm not sure what your sexual preference has to do with your ability to go outside and hike. But right now, that money is going towards our trails, fire mitigation, other worthy causes. And that is very clearly here on the record why, at least I, for one commissioner, was opposed to that bill. And I thought we had made that clear to our state legislative delegation as well. If we had not before, I believe we did just now.
Well, when it goes to, I mean, just to, let's, let's, we've got our processes, obviously, and those were called into question by the representative. His calling our, our processes into question was by explaining his processes, which, you know, Kevin, I would hope you would have an appreciation for the fact that, yeah, the State House can do the process that they want after 150 years of being shaped by, by, by public opinion. But here in Douglas County, we've got processes that have been shaped by at least 50 years of our own public opinion and our own public input. And the reality is, he's, he's niggling on the fact that he wishes we would have called our lobbyists and pleased explained it to them first, as opposed to coming before our own residents, coming before our own friends and neighbors and family to make our position clear. That's why he was here today. He just doesn't like us doing things in public until he gets the chance to do his thing in public. It's just so hypocritical. And to know that this is the man standing in the way of the people of Douglas County voting to track their own future, the hypocrisy is explanatory.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chair, if I could just bring the resolution kind of, I'm sorry. If I could, Mr. Chair, just bring the resolution back to the, kind of the point of the resolution, which was, the state legislature continues to impose rules and mandates, largely unfunded mandates, on us and the people of Douglas County. And our taxpayers are the ones that pay the price for that, pay the burden of those unfunded mandates coming from the state of Colorado onto us. And that, I believe, is in large measure why we are pro-local control and pro-hardworking taxpayer and introduced this resolution today. And so therefore, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution opposing state mandates impairing local control.
I will second. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? In my seven years, it just boils down to, again, unfunded mandates and local control or something, are two items that make it very difficult for counties and municipalities to govern the way their citizens expect. And I believe we are endeavoring to reflect the needs of the people that we're continuing to see reinforcement for of local control when it comes to governance. So I will be in support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. We have had very robust citizen comment and Commissioner comment. I'll move to any other business before the board. Any other business? County manager, anything for the county manager? Okay, I know we have many citizens here ready for our public hearing. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 1:30 PM. We'll adjourn for about five minutes and reset. We are adjourned.